I'm gonna get my first one in there. All right. Good evening and welcome to the second evening of our Cincinnati City Council Forum. This event is sponsored by the League of Women Voters of the Cincinnati area and I am your moderator, Desiree Futel, this evening, serving as the Vice President of Voter Service for the League. This event is also co-sponsored by the Women's City Club of Greater Cincinnati, as well as the Urban League of Greater South, Southwestern Ohio, excuse me. So this event is being streamed on Facebook Live and will also be available to replay on YouTube. You can see the first evening of this event on our YouTube page, the League of Women Voters YouTube page, the Cincinnati area. So how this is gonna work is we are allowing our candidates to respond to each question. We're giving them two minutes each to respond. Our first question being, please introduce yourself and share your vision for the Cincinnati Police Department. So we are going to start this evening off with Jim Tarbell.
Good evening, good afternoon, good evening. And you know, I want to start with my service in council, which was for nine years. Ordinarily, it would be eight before your term limited, but Bobby Stern, the 25-year veteran of council, vowed to me for her last year and I was able to get an extra year in council. And I can't wait to be part of this because after I left council nine years, you know, I, I thought that was probably the extent of my service in that category, until events of the last few years that I found myself increasingly uncomfortable with what was going on at City Hall versus what I was used to and what I thought we needed. And in the case of the league, you know, I grew up with the league. My mother is very involved with junior league and I, I know the, the purpose, the vision of the league and happy to be part of it. When I think about police, I think about trust, I think about a sense of place, and I think about community-oriented policing. Community-oriented policing is at the top of my list in terms of a future for police community relations. That was just coming on as a part of the language when I first started on council, community-oriented policing, which basically means what it says, and that is a sense of community between the police and the taxpayers. So I, I can talk some more about that, I think, a little bit later. But trust, you know, I grew up, I was surrounded by police in my neighborhood. About 12, 12 people, firemen and policemen lived within a few blocks of where I grew up. I grew up with a sense of trust. I know what it is, what it means, and, and it's not the same quite as what it used to be. And a sense of place is so much what I'm about, and that is to help recreate, reestablish a sense of place, a sense of belonging for all of us.
Thank you so much. Next, we will have Michelle Dillingham.
Thank you. Local politics absolutely matters in people's lives. This is why I am running for city council, because we all need representation, not just the wealthy and connected. So my name is Michelle Dillingham. I am asking for your vote. While my campaign lost the last time I ran by a handful of votes, I continue to work on the issues important to our neighborhoods, testifying at City Hall on how so many issues were harming and impacting our neighborhoods. A lot of times, the game is rigged. Working families and families struggling to make ends meet can wonder, when can they really win any of these fights against those who are only looking to profit and not protect the families and people who are residents of our city? Too many are living in entrenched poverty. Many unacceptable problems persist in our criminal justice and public, public education spaces. The good news is that, that there are policy solutions. Council members can pass things that benefit our residents. Cincinnati needs someone who understands what over half of us face, who have that lived experience and are willing to stand with them and do something about it. My vision for the Cincinnati Police Department is that every single one of us, no matter whether we're living, playing, or working, has a positive experience with our officers if they are in a situation where they have to encounter them. My vision is also that the men and women of the police department feel properly supported and are not put in an unfair position where they are the only answer to public safety. It's not fair to them, nor is it reasonable to expect police to solve community violence and crime. The CPD is an important part of the solution to community violence and crime, but they are not the only solution. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we're gonna have Evan Holt. Make sure you unmute Evan, please.
There we are. My apologies. Thank you to League of Women Voters and other co-hosts for the opportunity to speak. I appreciate it. Once again, my name is Evan Holt. I am Cincinnati-born and raised. I'm a veteran in the service industry here in Cincinnati. My mother is a social work veteran of 26 years here in Hamilton County, and she's done pretty much everything you can do with a social work degree. We are dealing with compounding crises here of homelessness, drug addiction, and mental health. And social workers on the front lines dealing with those issues, but we only spend about 1.3 to 1.5% of our overall budget on these services. Meanwhile, CPD takes about 37%. So friends of mine were engaged in peaceful protests last summer in their reasonable demands that we no longer continue to invest in our growing police budget and divert resources into services that actually serve in the interest of public safety. My friends were on the receiving end of tear gas and rubber bullets by the CPD and the Sheriff's Department. My friends were also held overnight in cold weather, handcuffed, and denied the dignity of even bathroom breaks or waters, which is human rights violations, by the way. To date, there's been no accountability for that, but I'm seeking to bring that accountability. So my vision for policing would mean that policing were only responding to the less than 2% of one, less than 2% of 911 calls that they receive for acting violent crime because we've invested in services that actually serve in the interest of public safety. So I echo the sentiments of other council candidates who encourage our investment in mobile crisis units and also encourage an investment in our drug rehabilitation services. So we're actually servicing the communities and their material needs as a priority as opposed to responding in enforcement measure. I would also like to see police departments that are more reflective of their communities, not just, not just because of race, because they're actually living in communities and no longer in the suburbs. They can view us as their neighbors and not just others or sheep, as one anonymous CPD officer referenced us as in the anonymous survey for the collaborative agreement. So that'll be my vision overall. Thanks for your time.
Thank you so much. And the last introduction we're gonna have is Kirk Grossman.
Thank you. I want to thank the League of Women Voters, Cincinnati Women's Club, Cincinnati, and the Urban League of Greater Southwest Ohio for giving us this opportunity and joining with my colleagues on the panel here. There's a lot that's been said about what's going on, but a lot of it, to my mind, comes down to relationships. I'm an engineer turned patent attorney, and I spent my career 30-plus years here collaborating with people to get problems solved, whether it's judges, clients, adversaries. The bottom line is you have to sit down with the people who are living the problem so you can understand what's going on and how to solve it. What I believe is going on here is we have a largely effective and well-managed police department, but we have some issues as well. And some of those issues come from systemic issues that are behind the scenes that we don't always see. We see statistics, excuse me, that don't always tell the whole story. But what we need is a police department that is reflective of the community, both in gender and in race. And I agree with Evan in terms of they have to be part of the community. What I look forward to as my vision of police is that we get them out of their cars and we get them interacting day-to-day with the people that are there to protect and serve. As I go around the community meeting people, I hear mostly that people want more police protection, not less. But what they also want is a police protection with a department that they know and that knows them. And I think fundamentally, that's where things have to change. We have to train better so that the mouth is the better weapon to use whenever you can, rather than the gun in your holster. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So I just wanted to remind everyone that this, putting this event together was very daunting. So we had to figure out how to get so many candidates seen and allow everyone to have adequate time and make sure the playing field was fair. So each candidate was invited to a one-hour time slot. We did two time slots last week at six and seven, and then this evening we would have one at six, seven, and eight o'clock. So if you're just tuning in, stay tuned, pop back in and stay with us to see all of the city council candidates that are going to be running for election. And I also wanted to mention, because all of these questions that we're asking are directly related to police reform and racial issues in the city. And while there are many issues facing city council, the issues of policing and race are one of the benchmarks on how the candidates view their role and our community's future. So we felt like this was a good way for voters to be able to differentiate between so many candidates. So I really appreciate the willingness of all our candidates to answer these questions. And we're gonna move on to our second question of the evening, starting back with Kirk Grossman. So the question is, police are being asked to respond to social, community, and health problems that may be beyond their role or training. How would you address this?
Well, I, I think that that is a significant part of the problem in the relationship between the police department and the community they're there to serve. It doesn't help a police officer to respond to a mental illness breakdown issue. In downtown, we actually have an effective program underway between the city police department and Generosity 513, which is part of the mental health services, where they actually interact with each other. So the police know that if they come upon a situation that is somewhat beyond their skill set, and as many situations are, they know they have somewhere to turn to get the help to make it happen. Because the fact of the matter is when a 911, excuse me, 911 call comes in or police come upon a scene, it is going to be the police that typically are first responders. Hopefully, we can enhance our 911 systems for the data metrics to analyze better, to send different forces. But what we really need is a, a well-trained, non-police response group that can work with and sometimes in place of the police. When somebody's having a health issue, we need to get them medical care, not a police officer with a gun. Same with a, a mental breakdown. I've seen instances here in the downtown area where this system works. Police are often the first ones on the scene because they can get there most quickly and they're spread around. But part of what we need to do is make sure they're trained to understand how best to de-escalate situations promptly and de-escalate them in a way that allows for the services needed to come back to help them. And it's the city's responsibility to make sure we've built a team and funded a team throughout all our neighborhoods to be able to respond in that way.
Thank you so much. Next, we're gonna have Evan Holt.
Right, thank you. So Ohio and I believe Cincinnati specifically are potentially gonna be doing a pilot program as far as police departments, wherein when a 911 call is received pertaining to someone involving a veteran, they're going to seek to have another veteran assist with the officer in terms of de-escalation. To quote a title Attorney General David Yost, there's a lot of talk about de-escalation. This is just one tool in that de-escalation toolkit, Yost said. Instead of hooking someone up and taking them down to the county, connecting them to a resource to help them, there's much better outcome. So officers are keenly aware that arresting people is not the ideal outcome in a lot of situations. I would just like everyone, regardless if they're a veteran or not, to be extended that level of courtesy. So I echo a lot of the sentiments of other, other candidates who say that we should be investing in mobile crisis units or having trained social workers who are trained in de-escalation techniques. Again, my mother's been a social worker for 26 years. She put herself in lots of dangerous situations, walking into homes unaware of the level, their threat level, and the only thing she had to protect her was a manila folder. But they're keenly prepared to do things like this and really serve in the interest of giving people the resources they need as opposed to locking up in jail. I would also seek to pursue other measures like decriminalizing small amounts of drug possession so we're no longer decriminalizing, no longer criminalizing drug addiction so that we can redirect services into rehabilitation as opposed to preventing them in a perpetual cycle of being in and out of prison. That's what I would seek to do overall. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your response. I'm gonna go ahead and read the question again, just in case people just logged on. So the question is, people are being asked to respond to social, community, and health problems. Excuse me, did I say people? I meant to say police, police. Police are being asked to respond to social, community, and health problems that may be beyond their role or training. How would you address this? Next, we have Michelle Dillingham.
Thank you. You know, Cincinnati residents want council to ensure that city services are delivered efficiently, effectively, and fairly. That includes services from the police department. The relationships between policing and community of color particularly could be improved by committing to the best practices of community policing that were put into place with the federal consent decree some years ago. But we know that we can't just rely on some consent decree from the federal government to make sure this is happening. We have to have a council and a mayor who are really active in making sure that those tenants of community policing are happening, that those practices are actually being played out and working on the ground. This requires leadership from council that prioritizes, prioritizes problem-solving, right? Not just calls for service. That should not be the measure of success, that we're really engaging in problem-solving and ongoing community input to ensure that those principles of community policing are also happening and being put into practice. We need more investment in these community policing strategies like our partnership center, like pivot funding, and all the other proven strategies that we know work. And a recent article showed that in recent years, council and the mayor have really gone by the wayside on the original consent decree agreement. We need a deepening of investment on that work. And I think this will go a long way to ensure a responsive department. Again, right sizing in terms of the expectations that police are not the sole solution to safety, right? That they are just part of a much broader strategy to ensure safe neighborhoods in our city. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And last, we're gonna have Jim Tarbell.
You know, if I may, I'd like to piggyback on the, the initiative Mr. Grossman talked about the organization Generosity 513, because I'm meeting with them tomorrow morning on the subject of problems on the street with homeless folks and, and folks that are having problems. And I was having had the experience with DCI when it first started, Downtown Cincinnati Incorporated. One of the best things they ever did was to have active, on-the-street social workers trained in problems showing like that. And they would meet with people individually to try to, to see what, what their specific problems were. And that went away for whatever reason, I'm not sure. But now with Generosity 513, apparently is coming back. And I found out about that in the process of talking to street workers about problems that I saw on the street. And I'm real hopeful with that. You know, the, the complaint authority, I was a part of the team that, that ushered the push for that with Tyrone Yates 10 years ago. And, and I, I think that we are not quite there yet. The funding for complaint authority is not quite what it ought to be, and it's one of our most effective tools, I think, for building community relations. And the, you know, people need a forum where they can examine the situation and talk about it among the, each other and work out solutions for how do we go from here.
Thank you so much. I would like to double back to our first question and allow Councilwoman Jan-Michelle Lemon Kearney to introduce herself. I'm gonna formally read you the question. We are allowing two minutes to respond, and we have our timekeeper who's gonna give you a one-minute and a 30-second warning. But the question is, please introduce yourself and share your vision for the Cincinnati Police Department.
Okay, so hi, I'm Jan-Michelle Lemon Kearney. I'm currently on city council, and let me just say, I apologize for being late. I was already late and then I had login problems. And so, you know, that, that combination just creates a lot of stress. But anyway, thank you for having me. I'm really, I'm really glad to, to, to be here. So I can just tell you that our Cincinnati Police Department has come a long, long way since 2001. And that's, we owe that to the collaborative agreement. We've made a lot of changes since then. We've had more community-oriented policing, where the police force is becoming more of a part of our community, and that's, that's super important. And so, you know, we're not perfect. We still have work to do, but we have gotten a lot better. And I think we're heads and shoulders above a lot of police departments in this country. We still have a lot of traffic stops. You know, there was a recent study done on driving while black, and that's still an issue. And with the one minute left, you know, I'll say that, you know, my vision for our police department is that we keep moving forward with more reforms, we're going in the right direction. You know, there's more community collaboration, and we have to continue that.
Thank you so much for your response, Ms. Jan. I will read the second question, but I'm gonna give you a moment. We'll read the question and mention our sponsors. The second question is, police are being asked to respond to social, community, and health problems that may be beyond their role or training. How would you address this? But before we go into that, I just wanted to mention, if you're just logging on, this event is hosted by the League of Women Voters of the Cincinnati area, as well as the Women's City Club of Greater Cincinnati and the Urban League of Greater Southwestern Ohio. This event, because of the sheer magnitude of so many candidates running for city council, we had to break things up into one-hour time slots. So last Thursday was our first evening, where we had a six o'clock and a seven o'clock event with five candidates in each. And this evening, we should have about six candidates each hour at six, seven, and eight. So we are ending our second question for this group, and we're heading to the third. But I will allow Councilwoman Jan-Michelle Lemon Kearney to answer the second question.
Okay, and so the second, I'm sorry, what was the second question? I'm so sorry, Desiree.
I'll read one more time. Police are being asked to respond to social, community, and health problems that may be beyond their role or training. How would you address this?
Well, yeah, it's, so, so there's several things. One, the training is super important. I know that police get de-escalation training, they get training in terms of dealing with, with mental health. But when you're talking about things that are really issues for, for social workers and for, you know, medical, you know, experts, the good thing is that we now have a partnership with UC Health with their, with their mobile mental health units. And so those units respond to all five districts. And that's, that's very important because, you know, the police are not really the ones who do the counseling and who, and who deal with, with mental health issues. And so we have to make sure that the experts in those fields do that. We've, we've also increased the number of social workers who work with the police department, and that's, that's vitally important as well. And so those are, you know, the training. So in, in response, just to make that more succinct, we have to collaborate with our human services organizations that are experts in those fields. But our police also need, need that training. So we have to make sure their training is effective.
Okay, thank you so much. We are doing really fabulous on time. I'm gonna ask the third question. The Cincinnati police data show racial disparities in police use of force against civilians. The city's population is 42% black, yet 75% of police use of force incidents are against African-Americans. How would you respond to this issue? And we are going to start with Michelle Dillingham.
Thank you. So policing communities is not the solution to fixing the social problems that arise when communities experience divestment from educational opportunities, safe and stable housing, job opportunities. Police are our partners in community, but they cannot be expected to create safe neighborhoods. Council must respond to the social and community and health problems, not by expecting police to show up on a call for service to fix it, but to do the critical work of community building, investing, and preventative work that we know works to reduce crime. A failure to center safe and affordable housing, to center public health services, recreation and youth programming, supports and investment that we know work, to open up opportunities for people to reach their full potential. These failures only make crime more likely, and it's unfair and short-sighted to accept, expect that police solve these problems that the lack of investment creates. Let's remember, the major factors to contribute to crime are poverty, lack of meaningful employment, educational opportunity, poor housing, and lack of hope. Also, social isolation, lack of social supports, lack of support for families. And COVID has only made that worse. One of the most important criminal justice challenges lately has been domestic violence against women. We've had a significant increase in this. That's related again to the pandemic stressors, as well as challenges of eviction and job loss and lack of money and poverty. These stressors can be addressed through, from city council to look at our housing policy, our housing crisis, increasing family and neighborhood supports. These are the things that I know will help rectify this unfair treatment of African-Americans with, from CPD. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we're gonna have Jim Tarbell.
You know, this, I think the percentages, the numbers speak for themselves. It's already been alluded to in a very substantial way. And we just need to have faith in, in the science here of the numbers. And I think that, you know, I had the article in the paper this morning about adding more women to the police force was some of the best news I've ever heard. And we, I think, are 22% women now in the police force. And the goal, it's called 30-30, and the goal is to have 30% women on the police force by the year 30, by the year 23-30. And I have six sisters, and I know having more women on the scene is a good thing. I wanted to allude to, very quickly, to the Safety Director. I was fortunate enough to have become involved in council when we had a Safety Director, which was an administrative position, second to the city manager. We've got to get a strong city manager, a professional city manager, back in charge as a CEO. That's when this city operated the best. And the Safety Director, as the connection between public safety and city council and the, and the public, was the best I've ever witnessed. And we've got to bring that back. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to remind our candidates that the question being asked is also can be found in the chat. Next, we are gonna have, hear from Evan Holt.
Thank you very much. So I echo the sentiments of Michelle Dillingham. The vast majority of crime is direct result of people's material needs not being met, which is why my platform is centering that as a priority. But that being said, as it pertains to the abuse issues within the police department, just unfortunately amongst black people, I believe we need to have a three-pronged response. Accountability, number one, so that includes expanding the CCA, not fully funding it, expanding it. Also making people aware of it, so people know they can report these abuses and know there will be accountability. And there should also be, again, accountability. Like, the police law want to say that, or I guess, Deeters are saying that they want to have more stringent penalties for those who caught with unlicensed firearms. Why don't we should have more stringent penalties for officers who violate their oath of duty? I believe we all seem to have transparency. So that means access to disciplinary files officers that retain their previous actions. That should be very accessible, very knowledgeable public. And then divestment, where that means divesting from having officers who don't live here in the city, investing more in trying to hire officers who actually live in the city. And then also divesting from more investment in policing and allocating resources into these mobile crisis units, into things that can truly serve in the interest of public safety and keep people and getting their needs met as a priority above all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I am going to read the question once more, just for anyone who just logged on. on. So the question we are asking candidates is, Cincinnati Police Data shows racial disparities in police use of force against civilians. The city's population is 42% black, yet 75% of police use of force incidents are against African Americans. How would you respond to this issue? And we are going to Kurt Grossman.
As an engineer, I look at data somewhat differently, perhaps, than just the public might. I don't look at it for headlines as much as what it can really teach us. What those, that data doesn't tell you, unfortunately, is that by a factor of more than two to one, blacks are victims of crime in our city, 67% to 29%. So it is not surprising that there'll be more interactions. It's also, at least the numbers show that the perpetrators are more often black than white. But what that suggests to me is not that there's a race issue in that sense, as much as there's a systemic problem in our community. And I think this is part of what Michelle was getting at. We have a number of people in our community living in poverty, unable to lift themselves up out of poverty. We've been fighting this battle for five decades and haven't won a battle yet. It's the responsibility of city council to put together programs that will actually start winning those battles and bringing people out of the despair of poverty and into hope where they can have more affordable housing, safer housing, and more interaction with the community and police on a positive basis rather than a negative basis. The other question is, how much systemic bias do we have in our police department? 33% of these cases were actually black officers. Is it black officers being racist against a black perpetrator? I doubt it. But what it does show is there's a significant use of force, and that's really the bigger problem. And that's where the CCA comes in. What we need to do is look at how many of these are resulting in CCA complaints, and how many of them after that process show an improper use of force, so that we better train our officers. What ultimately I'd like to see is to hire more officers from high-crime areas who can be role models to their friends and their neighbors, and help solve and move people forward to get beyond the problems that generate us down into a level of crime activity on a regular basis. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And last, we're going to have Jan Michelle Lemon Kearney.
Thank you. Yeah, well, the, you know, racial disparities are not acceptable. I mean, it's just not acceptable. And so when we see that, we know that, yes, we still have a problem. And I mentioned that earlier about driving while black. I mean, you know, black people have known that for years, that, you know, we get stopped more often. We also get charged more often, and we get longer sentences. So there are racial disparities. It's real. It's not our imagination. What are we going to do about it? So the first thing is, I think everybody realizes now, we cannot police our way out of crime. You know, as several candidates mentioned, and they're absolutely right, you know, as, as unemployment goes up, gun violence goes up. You know, people are suffering, are really struggling and suffering from, you know, from poverty, from housing insecurity, from, from food insecurity. These are all underlying factors that we have to address, and they cannot be addressed through the police, obviously. I mean, these are things that we cannot ignore. And we can't just say, you know, let's police our way out of poverty. We can't do that. We have to do something in our communities to really lift our families and our, out of poverty, to give them economic opportunity. But meanwhile, you know, we do have to look at our police force and see what kind of training they are getting, what kind of, you know, bias training they're getting. Because, you know, everybody's got biases. I mean, you know, racism is real. It exists in this country. And everybody is a victim of it. And so that is a very real part of training that has to happen. We do have racial bias training in the police department. You know, I'm not familiar enough with it to know if it's effective. I mean, I've been here during a time of COVID, and a lot of this, we just haven't been privy to. But that is something we do need to look at. You know, why are there more African Americans being arrested? That's just unacceptable. And the fact that, you know, as I said, we're charged more often and getting longer sentences is also not acceptable, has to be addressed.
Thank you so much. Last, we are going to allow one minute for closing remarks. And we are going to start with Evan Holt.
All right. Thanks again to League of Women Voters, and the other co-hosts for putting on this panel and giving me the opportunity. I very much appreciate it. Once again, I'm Evan Holt. There are obviously a lot of candidates running for council. I'm proud to announce that I was one of the earlier ones. I've been running this race since July of last year, because I've been aware that it's long overdue to have working-class representation for the decisions that are being made for us about us. So my priority, if I'm elected to council, will always overwhelmingly be centering the individual over corporate profits. Too often, it seems to be we're bending over to appease corporate interests, and the money that is coming from our budget, this is our tax dollars, is not being spent on the individual. So that will be a priority above all. And also, the question comes, who has the political will to stand up against the establishment? Who has the will to call out the Daniel Hillses of our city, who are holding us back and preventing actual meaningful police reform in this city? So if you're electing me and other candidates like Michelle Dillingham and others, like, hopefully, we can transform the city council and have us see this more reflective of the individual, and centering the dignity of the individual over corporate profits. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we're going to have Jim Michelle Lemon Kearney.
Thank you. And thank you to our hosts for having us. So I can tell you, as I said, I want to emphasize that our police department is doing much better than it, we're in a better place than we were in 2001. But, you know, we still have work to do. We talked about diversity. You know, Cincinnati's almost 50% African American. Our police department is less than 30% African American. It's only 22% women. We need more diversity. The community-oriented policing is a key part of success. The police department has to be in partnership with the community. And so we're not policing our way out of, out of our problems. We have to work together. And it's very important that we have a good working relationship between the community and our Cincinnati Police Department. And that relationship, I see it strengthening.
Thank you so much. Next, we're going to have Jim Tarbell.
Once again, you know, thanks so much. This forum is so important, and opportunities for us to meet on a regular basis is so critical. There are nine of us. There are 330,000 people in our community. And do the math, you know, so much weighs on our shoulders. And when we're working together on a regular basis, it's fun. It really can be very pleasant finding solutions to these problems together. Safety Director is very important. The budget, we are under budgeted in almost all departments at City Hall right now. And if we're going to provide other social services to make policing, policing more effective, we've got to reflect that in the budget. Thanks so much. I'm sorry I said Junior League instead of League of Women Voters. But I I'm pleased to have the opportunity to be with you. Thanks so much.
Thank you so much. One minute of closing remarks. Michelle Dillingham.
Thank you. My name's Michelle Dillingham, again, asking for your vote. I am running to serve on council because I believe strongly that we have not had meaningful input of our residents on the city budget and decisions that are being made. We need people on city council who are responsive, who have experienced leading coalitions, being in leadership, knowing how to bring to bear what the community needs and wants to City Hall. We have huge problems of racist tax incentive programs. We have a lack of transparent and accountable budget process right now. We have huge disparities that persist, quality of life issues at an all-time low. And yet, we have millions of CARES Act dollars being spent still on a for-profit soccer stadium, recently another million dollars. Please elect people who will be good stewards of your tax dollars and not serve only the wealthy and connected. Thank you for your vote.
Thank you so much. And last, and certainly not least, we're going to have Kurt Grossman.
Thank you. Again, I want to thank the hosts and sponsors for all this. This is a great opportunity. It's important that everybody listening gets to know the people who are running to help manage your city. I am pleased that we have what I believe is a very good and effective police department. But we also have some systemic race issues, which frankly, we've had since I came to this city in the 70s to go to college. It has not gone away. So it's time that we actually elect people who are going to sit down and get behind the problems and figure them out. Make sure we've demilitarized our police where we need to. Make sure we've provided appropriate implicit bias training for our police. Make sure we've trained the community to get involved and speak up, as Mr. Rodney in East Westwood reminds us every time we meet. It's incumbent upon all of us to stand up and do the right thing for our communities and for our families. And together, that's how we'll solve these problems and become the great city that we know Cincinnati has always been entitled to be. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I wanted to take a moment to thank each of the candidates that showed up here tonight and shared your opinion and position on these very important issues. In this six o'clock hour, we had Jim Tarbell, council member Jan Michelle Lemon Kearney, Michelle Dillingham, Evan Holt, and Kurt Grossman. We are going to be hosting another group of candidates promptly at 7:00 PM. If the candidates that are logged on now would like to leave this meeting, you can view the rest of this event on our Facebook Live page, but you can go ahead and log off. I just wanted to remind any of the viewers that are viewing this forum on Facebook, this is being put on by the League of Women Voters of Cincinnati area, as well as the Women's City Club of Greater Cincinnati and the Urban League of Southwestern Ohio. So thank you so much for attending tonight, and we are going to resume promptly at 7:00 PM.
Thank you, and good evening.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Thanks, Desiree.
Thanks again, you all. Appreciate you. Have a good evening.